I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The city clerk, please take roll.
Will. Wanda Sang.
Here.
Joe Dumont.
Here.
Joyce J.
Here.
Davis Reinhardt.
Here.
Mike Stites.
Here.
Tracy Langworthy.
Here.
Karen Adams.
Here.
And Karen Berry.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of March 8th, 2010?
Summit.
Second.
A motion for approval, signed by Councilmember Stites, discussion on the motion, on the main motion for the minutes. Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. We have some proclamations and ceremonies tonight, so I will lock down to the podium. I think what will start first tonight is the eighth grade essay contest winners. I'm going to ask a few people to step forward and please say a few words. We have David Holland, our sponsor. David, please step forward. We have Suzette Davis Hudson from Congressman Pro Mutter's office. Frank Tunison, please step forward, from Great Western Bank. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Holland.
Good evening. My name is David Holland. I work for Broadridge Financial in Wheat Ridge, and this is our seventh annual sixth and eighth grade essay contest. I want to thank the mayor and the city council for having us again down again this year to help out, along with Congressman Pro Mutter's office, Frank, and Samantha from Great Western Bank. Oops, sorry. There we go. I also want to thank the Jefferson Foundation and Katie Tannen for their support. I also want to thank Wheat Ridge High School, they grade the essays for the essay contest, so I really appreciate their help. I also want to thank all the principals, teachers, students, to make this worthwhile. As we do every year, the winners, I'll announce them in reverse order, from the, up to the winner, for each eighth and sixth grade, that get a gift card from Barnes &amp; Noble, and also will donate $100 to each elementary and Everett Middle School for participating. So without further ado, oh, one thing, we had over 577 kids participated this year. So, okay, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. Again, thank you for having us. I'm Suzette Hudson with, again, Congressman Ed Pro Mutter's office, and unfortunately, he's not able to make it today, he's on his way back to DC, so I'm here on his behalf. And education is one of my key areas in the congressional office here in our seventh district, and I want to say to all those that enter the competition, congrats and good luck in your future, and for those who have finally won, again, congratulations and all the best in your future endeavors. Thank you.
And I'm Frank Tunison from Great Western Bank, and we sponsor this event as well, make contributions through the Jefferson Foundation, and the same thing, I just want to say, a great job on participating and really writing some great essays, and just want to say congratulations to everybody that participated, and especially the winners as well, so, good job, guys.
All righty, when I call your name, please come up and I'll give you a certificate and you can stand right over here, please. All right, we're going to start with Mitchell Melton. All righty, next is Lindsey, excuse me, Lindsey, I want to say Thor Shine, hopefully then. All right, and next we have, excuse me, Alina Bella Brody. All right, and this year's winner is Eugene Florano, is that right? All right, next we'll do the eighth grade winners.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and have some group photos, if any parents want to come up front, take some photos of your children, we'll have them squeeze in a little bit.
Thank you.
Thank you to our sponsors, and congratulations to all the students who had entered the contest I'm going to ask Mrs. Wheat Ridge to please step forward to read a few proclamations for us, and our first proclamation tonight is Child Abuse Prevention Month, April 2010. I'd like to ask, is Scott Shields here? Please step forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, citizens of Wheat Ridge, good evening. Whereas children represent our greatest hope for the future and deserve our support and protection, and whereas every child deserves to be safe from abuse and neglect, and every family deserves to be safe and supported in their community, and whereas protecting children from abuse, neglect, and maltreatment is the responsibility of each of us, and we should be engaged in efforts to prevent child abuse and neglect, and whereas every caregiver, family, and community should have access to resources to strengthen and stabilize families, and whereas we will continue to support dedicated individuals and community-based programs that work daily to support and strengthen families and better the lives of children, and whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of community partnerships created among social service agencies, schools, businesses, law enforcement agencies, community organizations, and other child-serving agencies, and whereas communities are stronger when all citizens become aware of child abuse and neglect prevention, and become involved in supporting parents to raise their children in a safe, nurturing environment. And therefore, I, Mayor Jerry DiTullio, do hereby proclaim April 2010 to be Child Abuse Prevention Month in the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, and urge Wheat Ridge citizens to actively participate in the care and protection of our children.
My name is Scott Shields, I'm the chief executive officer of Family Tree, and on behalf of our board of directors, our staff, and certainly not the least, our clients that we serve every year, I'd like to say thank you to the city council and the mayor, and the city of Wheat Ridge for their support. Family Tree's mission is to help people overcome child abuse, domestic violence, and homelessness to become safe, strong, and self-reliant, and nationally, the Child Abuse Prevention Month initiative has been going on for more than 25 years. I think it's unfortunate in today's day and age that we still need a month in which we direct awareness toward the issue of child abuse and neglect, but it's still very important, and very, again, pleased that the city of Wheat Ridge has chosen to support this initiative locally and help us to raise awareness in our community, a community which Family Tree has been proud to be part of for nearly 34 years. So, thank you very much to the mayor and to the city council and the city of Wheat Ridge for this support, we appreciate it greatly. Thank you.
Our next proclamation will be celebration of Wheat Ridge Public Health Week, and public health champions. I'd ask our staff, Ken Johnstone and Sally Payne, to please step forward, and also Elise Lubell. And I'm assuming Elise will say a few words afterwards.
In celebration of Wheat Ridge Public Health Week and public health champions, whereas the week of April 5th through the 11th, 2010, is National Public Health Week, and the theme is "A Healthier America, One Community at a Time," and whereas the Jefferson County Public Health Department and Livwell Wheat Ridge, as part of its celebration of Public Health Week to create a healthier Jefferson County, "One Community at a Time," has named Ken Johnstone, Director of Community Development, and Sally Payne, Senior Planner, as public health champions, for their work with the city council and commissions, business partners, and the community to create Envision Wheat Ridge, a plan for a bright future which contains many policies and plans that support a healthy, sustainable, and economically viable Wheat Ridge. And whereas Envision Wheat Ridge, the long-term comprehensive plan, provides long-term guidance for sustainable economic development, mixed land use, and the built environment plans, and policies that address livability issues and healthy lifestyles, which all affect the public's health. And whereas Envision Wheat Ridge aspires to ensure safe, attractive, and comfortable access and travel for all users, and whereas Envision Wheat Ridge values investments in parks, recreation, and open space that supports healthy environments, which will promote a healthy lifestyle for all residents, and encourage opportunities for lifelong activity and engagement. And whereas Envision Wheat Ridge supports the investment in community gardens and urban agriculture and farmers' market, which will greatly improve access to fresh fruits and vegetables and healthy eating. And now therefore be it resolved that the city of Wheat Ridge does hereby proclaim that April 12th through the 18th, 2010, is Wheat Ridge Public Health Week, and encourages all residents of Wheat Ridge to get involved in creating a healthier Wheat Ridge.
And I have a copy of Envision Wheat Ridge, for anybody who hasn't seen it, and I really do encourage folks to take a peek at it, it's a brilliant document. So I want to thank mayor and city council members for the public health proclamation. My name's Elise Lubell, I'm Director of Health Promotion at Jefferson County Public Health, and every year, the public health department nominates community members who have done important work to improve the public's health when it's not their primary job, and it just made the most sense, based on, again, this brilliant document, that we honored city staff and city council and the planning commission for adopting the plan, and the visions that you express in this plan, and all the different activities and policies that will encourage physical activity and healthy eating and active living, and kids walking and biking to school, and senior citizens increasing their mobility, and all the things that make the community very livable, and physically healthy and physically healthy. So thank you again for all your support in this and your continued work, because it really is important to make Wheat Ridge the community that we know it can be. So thank you again, mayor.
Thank you.
City council.
Just briefly, I just wanted to thank Jefferson County Public Health and their partner, Livwell Wheat Ridge, for their participation in the comp plan, I think, you know, but for their participation, some of these principles of active living and healthy, active living and healthy eating wouldn't have gotten to the table, and they really were messages that resonated with the public, with the citizens of Wheat Ridge, so we're glad to have been able to incorporate it into our comprehensive plan. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Our last proclamation tonight is National Crime Victims Rights Week, April 18th through the 24th, 2010. I'd ask Chief Brennan to please step forward, and if you have any other officers you'd like to bring forth, that'd be great, because we'll do our citizen awards after that. Do we have a representative from Victims Outreach? Here? No? Okay.
Whereas 21 million Americans suffer the indignity of crime each year and may experience emotional, physical, psychological, and financial harm as a result of such crime, and whereas a just nation acknowledges crime's impact on individuals, families, and communities, and ensures that victims are treated with fairness, dignity, and respect as they interact with the criminal justice system, and whereas 25 years ago, the president's task force on victims of crime drew attention to the poor treatment of victims in the criminal justice system, calling it indifferent to victims' needs, and whereas a decades-long struggle to balance the scales of justice resulted in victims' rights laws in every state, and more than 32 state constitutional victims' rights amendments than enshrining the ideals of fairness, dignity, and respect for victims of crime, and whereas treating victims with dignity serves the public interest by engaging victims in the justice system, inspiring respect for public authorities, and promoting confidence in public safety, and whereas there is more to be done to advance these ideals, as too many victims are denied their right to attend trial, present an impact statement at sentencing, or receive notice of the release of an offender. And whereas National Crime Victims Rights Week provides an opportunity for us to raise awareness of the foundation of victims' rights, fairness, dignity, and respect, and to recommit to honoring those values by ensuring that all victims are afforded their legal rights and provided with assistance as they face the financial, physical, and psychological impact of crime, and whereas the city of Wheat Ridge is joining forces with victim service programs, criminal justice officials, and concerned citizens throughout Wheat Ridge and America to raise awareness of victims' rights and observe National Crime Victims Rights Week. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the city council of Wheat Ridge do hereby proclaim the week of April 18th through the 24th, 2010, as the city of Wheat Ridge Crime Victims Rights Week, and reaffirm commitment of the city of Wheat Ridge to respect and enforce victims' rights and address their needs during Crime Victims Rights Week and throughout the year, and express our appreciation for those victims and crime survivors who have turned personal tragedy into a motivating force to improve our response to victims of crime and build a more just community.
Mayor and city council, as you may be aware, we, Police Department, the city, we don't have our own victims' rights advocates, but we have a outstanding relationship, and a long-term relationship, with Victims Outreach Information, and they service thousands of victims of domestic violence, child abuse, and other crimes in the city, and for the dollar amount that we pay them, the service that we give for them, we get an outstanding bang for the buck. So, I really wished we'd had somebody here tonight to recognize from VOI, but I'll make sure that they get this proclamation. Mayor and city council, I'd like to take the opportunity to do a citizen award, if Dennis Ray Sage and Morgan Pearson, if you're in the audience today, would you come up, please? Mayor and city council, on March 14th of 2010, Dennis Ray Sage and Morgan Pearson observed a silver Jeep Cherokee towing a black Acura stop in front of their house. The occupants of both vehicles exited and disconnected the tow strap. Mr. Sage and Ms. Pearson went outside to ascertain what these folks were up to. The parties ran to the Jeep and left the scene. Both Mr. Sage and Ms. Pearson were observants in obtaining the Jeep's license plate number, which they were able to provide to Officer Nate Levin. It was discovered that the black Acura was a stolen vehicle. Their willingness to get engaged and involved, and their perceptiveness in getting the license plate number, directly resulted in the arrest of the driver of the Acura, as well as assisted investigators in getting a search warrant for the Jeep's registered owner's residence in Wheat Ridge. Due to their cooperation and working with our police department as excellent witnesses, the subsequent arrest and recovery of stolen property from multiple crimes was possible. Their actions have shown that they have the qualities highly recognized by the Wheat Ridge Police Department for citizen involvement in action, when they could have easily not gotten involved at all. The department would like to take the opportunity to recognize both Dennis Ray Sage and Morgan Pearson with these citizen awards from the Wheat Ridge Police Department and our ceremonial coin.
Congratulations to everyone tonight. We'll move on to public comment. Citizens' right to speak is reserved for members of the public who wish to speak on any item not on the agenda. Speakers are allowed three minutes, others may donate their time to the speaker at the podium for a total of nine minutes. When you are speaking at the podium, you will see a green light when you start speaking, a yellow light when you have 30 seconds left, and a red light when your time is up. So please step forward to the podium, state your name and spell your last name for the record, your address and/or your city. Thank you.
Kyle Walpole, Evergreen, Colorado. Despite my previous complaint regarding incompetence and misconduct by Chief Brennan and officers within the Wheat Ridge Police Department, the chief continues to maintain that his department acted appropriately, and that no further explanation is necessary. I emphasize that I did nothing illegal, immoral, or unethical, and was never charged in regard to the false allegations. Despite a diagnosis of an inner ear disease in 1998, which caused the loss of much of my hearing and other health effects, I never used my disability, nor have I ever, as an excuse not to reach my career goals, or limit my service with the federal government. I opted to utilize a service hearing dog in 1999, whose certification exceeds state and federal standards. Prior to 2005, Max and I were featured on KUSA, KMGH, KCNC, and Fox News in Colorado. We were recognized internationally by the International Association of Assistance Dog Partners, and Max received the internationally renowned Service Dog of the Year Award by Delta Society with their Beyond Limits 2004 Award. We were also featured in numerous magazines and newspapers, and there is ample information available on the internet. Our work also assisted with service dog regulation change at Denver International Airport and within the National Park Service. Any police chief or detective who had done the requisite brief amount of research, this would have been obvious to. Per the Rehabilitation Act of 1973 and the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990, a police department is required to modify its policies, practices, and procedures concerning interactions with disabled individuals and those who utilize service animals, particularly not only after they have had a contact, but after somebody has informed them of the disability. However, on April 1st, 2005, your SWAT team conducted a knock-and-announce raid. After Max provided an active signal of a knock at the door and I approached, the door was burst in with a battering ram, hitting me and my service dog. Despite using lip reading as my major form of communication and informing SWAT officers of that, they continued to question me while their faces were covered with commando-style masks. I was separated from my service animal, and when I noted that to detectives and requested family members to come over and take over his care and custody, I was told, quote, "You better figure something out quick, or he's going to the effing pound." Your officers also refused to allow me to take medications, claiming, despite being located in these prescription bottles, which are labeled, that they couldn't be sure what they were. These are the bottles, and Jeffco District Attorney's Office said that the claim was made that they were expired. I assure you, the medications were not expired, and they had not turned to powder, as was reported. When I asked Sergeant Jepkama for a copy of your police department's policies in regard to the disabled and service animals, he stated, quote, "The department does not have a written policy on the subject listed," and this was just a couple weeks ago. Per a conversation with the Department of Justice on Friday, they indicated the following: "The lack of a general, or of a departmental general order and training that specifically addresses service animals increases the risk that an officer may respond to a disabled person who uses a service animal in a manner that constitutes a direct violation of the ADA. If an ADA violation were to occur, the city, county, and department could be subject to legal action, as Title II of the ADA may be enforced through litigation brought by private individuals or by several federal agencies, including, as they inform me, the Department of Justice." Additionally, municipalities may be held liable under Title II for failure to adequately train police officers on dealing with disabled persons. Other consequences could follow, including unfavorable media attention and increased pressure and scrutiny from disability rights organizations and the public. A county, city, and department's progress in improving community relations could be negatively impacted if officers are perceived as not appropriately responding to disabled persons. And I would ask the council, if it's not clear to you and to you, mayor, that your police chief does indeed have some explaining to do, particularly when this and myriad other evidence exists of misconduct on your part and your officers. Thank you.
Please step forward for public comment, and please spell your last name and your
Louise Turner, West 38th Avenue, Wheat Ridge. I'm here tonight to ask for the council... I'm here tonight to ask for the council to help a segment of Wheat Ridge citizenry that badly needs help. I'm talking about people who need help in paying their rent. We do not have a subsidized rent program. The county does, but the county has a two-year waiting list. It seems to be a growing problem, and for people who have had problems with losing their jobs, losing their homes, having gone through illnesses, and any range of problems that you might be able to come up with, they cannot pay their rent, and the next step is to go to a shelter. I know there are a lot of things, a lot of problems, everybody's got problems, and I know there are things that you can't do anything about. This is one of the few things I think you could very easily do something about. We have a housing authority. When the housing authority was formed, and I believe it was in the late 90s, there were people on the council who exclaimed and said that they hoped that it would be an agency that would really be a help to people who needed help. It got into effect in about, I would say, 2000, 2001, somewhere along in there, at the time when it was beginning. I contacted Mayor DeTulio, who was then Councilman DeTulio, and asked if we were going to have a program comparable to the Section 8 of the county that could really be a help to people. And he said, "No, what we're going to do is buy up properties that need attention or need things done to them, improve those properties, and sell to first-time homebuyers." The problem began, the first project was a 14-unit townhouse development known as the Bauer Townhouses at 38th and Quail. Like, as happened with many townhouses, they had become rentals over the years, and there was need of improvement and so forth. However, people were living there quite happily. The project was completed, and the program, which I believe is still going strong today, is the money that is retrieved from selling the units goes into the next project. And I don't know how many projects have been accomplished to this day, but it's still going on. And this is good, except there are flaws. And probably, the main flaw is the people who qualify to be first-time buyers aren't the people in Wheat Ridge who are needing help. They're not the ones who are in danger of ending up in a shelter at the next time the rent is due. And with the change from taking away apartments and converting them to something that is sold to other people, then the problem exists that as many as 14 families in this one development suddenly were put out of housing that they could afford to rent, and there was no place for them to go. We had a meeting at the, there were meetings on Mondays for a long time at the rec center. You could go and listen to the council people and ask questions. And on this particular night, the explanation of what was being done with the housing authority was part of the program, and the amount of money that was available to be spent, and it seems to me it was in the neighborhood of a million and a half dollars. Some had come from a grant from the state, and the rest, of course, from the city. I asked what, because we could ask questions, I asked if the city took any responsibility for helping these people who were put out of their affordable housing find another place where they could live. And the answer was very precise: No, that's the responsibility of the county. Well, as I said, the county has a two-year waiting list at the present time, and people are living in shelters until their names come up on the list. And somehow, it would be nice if there could be help from the city for these people who do need, really need help. The thing that seems to be most important today to all of the agencies in the city is development. Creating properties for people, improving properties, the same project. There are four agencies in this little tiny city, all in the development/realty business. The first, of course, is you people, the city council, the mayor, the administration of the city. The second is the Urban Renewal Authority, and millions of dollars have gone into the Urban Renewal Authority. The third group is 2020, and several million have already gone into 2020, in the same purpose, all in the interest of development. The fourth agency is the Housing Authority. Now maybe we don't need four agencies, all primarily interested in development. Maybe the Housing Authority could expand its realm of interest and do something to help the people who need help. There are people, you did something very nice last year, and I don't think anybody will forget it. You approved rebating half of the building permit fees on the roofs of people who were damaged in the tornado that cut a swath through District 3 and District 4 and damaged well over 1,000 homes. You agreed to rebate to them, and believe me, they were great people, were great people. When you help people in any respect, the citizens appreciate it. I'd like to ask you to quite seriously consider helping these people who cannot pay their rent, these people who are one step from going to a shelter, and do it in the name of the city, but have a program where you could help them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. I wanted to say one thing, that you may have misspoke on one issue. The Housing Authority, when they were doing the rehab, they always gave the people that were living in that property's first option to buy, because sometimes the purchase was actually cheaper than the rent. And secondly, if they didn't have a place to go, they were given opportunities from the Jefferson County Housing Authority immediately. And if they were able to, they went to different places within the City of Wheat Ridge. And then thirdly, some of them really just didn't want any help, they just decided to go somewhere else, because, for whatever reason. But the Housing Authority always made sure that nobody lost their home and didn't have a place to go.
Thank you.
Ms. Berry.
I would like to ask Mrs. Turner a question. Mrs. Turn?
Ms. Turner, Ms. Turner, we have one more question for you.
Was there a question?
Yes. From what you said, it's my understanding that you feel more folks are in danger of losing their homes through the inability to pay rent than people losing their homes because they can't pay mortgages. Is that correct?
I'm having a little trouble hearing you, I'm sorry.
Do you think renters need more assistance than people who own homes at this point? Is that what you feel needs to be done, is a rental assistance program?
Are you asking, are more of the people who need to help, people who have lost their homes, or people that rent? Is that your question?
Yes, yes. I thought I heard you say both, but then in the end, it seemed like you thought maybe more of a rental assistance program.
I think it's both. Many of the people who lost their homes have tried to rent. Some of them have ended up in the motels up in the northwest part of the city. There's every range of situation that you can imagine, but it boils down to a lot of people could use help.
Are these folks that you've talked to personally, or have heard through a certain specific organizations? I just kind of wonder how you, you know, how you've come to believe this is a serious problem.
Well, maybe this is a strange way to be involved, but my business is in the antique and collectible business. When people need money, automatically, if they have a certain type of thing, they go to a pawn shop. If they have household things, they come in to the antique stores to see if you're buying and can do it. And somehow, you remember the people who come in on a weekly basis, where they used to actually have things of a specific nature to sell. Now they will gather up anything they can find around the house. They will go dumpster diving at night while working to get a job in the daytime. At night, they go into the dumpsters to see if they can find anything they can possibly sell. I can't help but remember a person who came in and said, "This is what I have. I need enough to buy bread and toilet paper." We have had other people, many, who say, "I have to have such and such an amount of money so that I can stay in the motel for one more day, as opposed to sleeping in my car." And these are the kinds of things that we hear on a very regular basis, and I'll tell you, a lot of them are tear-jerkers.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Demott.
I just want to say also, Louise, I am on the board of the Housing Authority, and we do have a planning session tomorrow at 2:00. This is the first they've had, and I don't know if it's ever been, but in a long time. And one of the topics that we're going to discuss is how we compare to other housing authorities, and what they do as opposed to what we do. And any, any questions or information you want to, maybe I can bring up in the planning session. It's going to be all afternoon and evening. I'll be next door to you tomorrow morning, for most of the morning. If you want to maybe get me some questions, I'll definitely ask. And the findings of the, of our study, of our planning session will definitely, will come to council, and I'll definitely keep you up to date on what happens.
That would be great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Judson Lloyd. I come as a representative of Jefferson--
Please say your last name, please.
Lloyd, L-L-O-Y-D, L-L-O-Y-D.
Your address or your city, please.
4981 Garrison Street, Wheat Ridge. I'd like to speak to the fact that we at Jefferson Avenue United Methodist Church are very concerned about the alcohol ball board allowing an alcohol dispenser just within a few feet of our parking lot of our property. We have a program called INH that we share with the, with the city, actually. We're the only Wheat Ridge representative, and we have poor people who stay with us day and night for a week's time. They're allowed by law to have free access. They'd have free access to the alcohol store. They're not supposed to drink, and of course, they'd be immediately eliminated from the program and not have the access to counseling, and we do have ongoing counseling. It's spiritual counseling at this time. We have had a media pastor minister who's licensed in New York for clinical counseling as well, and we are in contact with a doctor of neuropsych and clinical psych, who we hopefully will meet with tomorrow to set up a practice within the church. So we ask along that law that we be, there be reconsideration. The other one is a real danger. We have elderly people. I walked one 90-year-old lady out to the parking lot, pardon my voice, on Sunday, and there were cars parked from the liquor people who are putting in their place on our property. The day before, they didn't park at all on their property, they parked on ours, within a few cars. And you'd have people coming out of the alcohol store with these little tiny bottles. You can see them elsewhere, there's with liquor stores, and they slug it down and then throw the bottle away. The bottle itself would be dangerous for little old people. We, um, excuse me, then the, mentioned the ongoing counseling. Can I answer any questions relative to danger? You've already had a presentation about danger, yours feeding crime by alcohol in this proximity in the city. These people are disadvantaged in the sense of minds from Agent Orange paralysis of my larynx, but we have disabled people to a higher degree in our church, as we're on the elderly side. We do have 105 regular members. Tendence has been full on about four occasions of our 130-member sanctuary in the last three or four months. Are there any questions I can ask? The pastor unfortunately was unable to make it today.
Mr. Demott.
I can, I'll make it quick. It's my understanding there was a, I went to preschool at that church a long time ago. But is, there was, I know there isn't a preschool there anymore. I had a, I have a preschool-aged son that I checked on. We went there and asked if you were going to have, if they had preschool there, and they said that it was something in the future that--
And answer directly to your--
The enrollment was too low, or something?
There are plans for the future. They do have a summer Sunday school. At the moment, we're sort of sharing with Wheat Ridge relative to young people, because we don't have that many young people. It's a church of older people with disabilities, but there is that, too. We love the kids, we have kids every Sunday. They have a nursery, an active nursery there at that time. We hope to be able to do more, and are working on it.
Also, I, I know the law concerning liquor stores changed last year, where they, they can open on Sundays now, and I'm wondering if--
Right. They'd be entering and coming out of the alcohol stores as we empty our church. When I escorted this lady at 90 out to her car, it was about 1:00 in the afternoon. So the liquor store would be going in full bloom for two hours at that time.
Well, I'm just wondering if our zoning, or who we could ask in staff, if our zoning, since that law changed last year, if our zoning, or the planning commission or the liquor board has looked into maybe changing something concerning churches and liquor stores? Or is that something we've looked at at all?
Well, a couple of things. In terms of the hours liquor stores may be open, that's a matter of statewide concern. The state legislature controls that, and if they're going to allow liquor on Sundays, that's not something that locally Wheat Ridge could affect. With respect to the distance requirements, spacing from churches, schools, et cetera, it's the liquor authority that issues or doesn't issue a liquor license. I can certainly check the records of the liquor authority and make certain that they follow the appropriate spacing in granting that license, but an appeal from the liquor authority is not to the council, it's to the district court. And I assume that license some time ago issued, but I'm pleased to check and make certain the, the requirements are pretty mechanical, and it'd surprise me if they didn't have those in front of them. Those are the two issues I hear, but one is controlled by state law, and the other, the liquor authority applies the state distance requirements to individual applications, and grants are denied based upon their judgment that the license has complied with the state requirements. I'm happy to look, but I'm assuming they've complied, but I'm pleased to check.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
How can we go to the state board?
I'm sorry, there's not a state board. Decisions of the liquor authority here in Wheat Ridge are appealable to the district courts.
That's all?
That's all.
How do we go about doing that?
Well, you need, I can't, I can't be your lawyer--
Understand.
--because I'm the city's lawyer.
Understand.
But those cases have to be filed within 30 days of the decision of the liquor authority granting or denying the license, and I don't know when that was. So there's a time clock that gets started, and it may already have run. I don't know if it's been 30 days since that liquor authority decision.
Okay, and I'm, sorry, that's the, where's the court located? I'm sorry.
Well, it'd be the Jefferson County District Court.
Jefferson County, at the Taj Mahal.
That's correct. At the Taj.
Is there any other address that we--
I'll tell you what, if you have any more questions, why don't you just talk to the city attorney on the side here? We'll let somebody else do our public comment. How about that?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dahlke, you maybe assist him a little bit, and just on some of his questions, and then, thank you for your time. Thank you. Sorry for the, go ahead and bring the mic down a little bit for you.
Cindy Beckfeld, B-E-C-K-F-E-L-D. I live at 4365 Xenon, X-E-N-O-N. And on the subject of the liquor store, there's less, there's more than five liquor stores within a mile of that store where they want to put that liquor store, and I don't think we really need any more liquor stores. And I really feel like a liquor store next to a church is in very bad taste. It is disrespectful to the church, and I feel like, in my opinion, that we don't need another liquor store there, and there should be no liquor store there. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else to speak on our public comment? Do we have anybody else to speak on our public comment before we move on? Seeing none, we'll move on. Oh, Mrs. Wheat Ridge, sorry.
Promise my comments short and sweet. Karen Thaler, T-H-A-L-E-R. I live in Wheat Ridge, District 1. My call is out to specifically dog owners who use the Crown Hill area lake to walk around. Seeing something lately that concerns me, and I know I, for one, do not want it to become a trend. Those who actually do pick up after their dog, I'm noticing now around the trail that we leave the bag on the side of the trail instead of taking it to a trash can. What is up with that? I really don't think that's, the code is allowing that, and that's not good. So, please be considerate. It's a lovely space. A lot of people use it. It's great for dogs, and it's just fabulous. Please be responsible. Bags are even provided in a couple of locations around the lake if you don't have any. Please just pick up after your dog. Don't be lazy. Walk it to the nearest trash receptacle and help keep it a nice space for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else for public comment before we move on? Are there any changes to the agenda tonight? So, the agenda will stand as published. Item 1 is the consent agenda. Councilmember Demott?
The approval of a consent agenda. 1A, appointment to the Board of Adjustments. Jennifer Walter, term to expire March 2, 2013.
Mr. Demott, just, Mr. Dahl, can we go outside? It's echoing back here. Thanks. Thank you. Sorry, Julie.
I'm going to start over with the consent agenda. 1A, appointment to the Board of Adjustment. Jennifer Walter, term to expire March 2, 2013. 1B, appointment to the Board of Adjustment for Paul Griffith, term to expire March 2, 2012. 1C, motion to approve award of ITB 1013 to A1 Chip Seal Incorporated in the amount of $137,579.56 for 2010 Slurry Seal Project. 1D, Resolution 172010, amending the fiscal year 2010 budget to reflect acceptance of CDBGR funds in the amount of $97,740. And in connection therewith, approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $97,740 for an energy audit and improvements to the Wheat Ridge Senior and Community Center. 1E, Resolution 162010, amending the fiscal year 2010 budget to reflect acceptance of a grant in the amount of $12,250. And in connection therewith, a supplemental budget appropriation for the amount of $12,250 for consulting services to facilitate community input meeting for 38th Avenue. 1F, motion for the approval of the annual licensing renewal of the cartograph system in the amount of $28,012. 1G, motion approving payment to Murray Dahl Kutschenmeister and Renault LLP for March 2010 legal services in the amount of $16,618.67.
Does anybody like to pull anything off the consent agenda? Motion's in order.
I move to approve 1A, B, C, D, E, F, and G.
Is there a second? We have a motion for approval of the consent agenda, seconded by Councilmember Sang. Please poll the council.
Motion carries 8 to 0.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is ordinances on first reading. The purpose of first reading is to notify the public of the date and time of the public hearing. Amendments are allowed on first reading. Public comment is not allowed on first reading. Item 2, Council Bill 04-2010, Councilmember Stites.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce an ordinance repealing and reenacting certain sections of Chapter 5 of the Code of Laws of the City if it is concerning the building code, the mechanical code, the plumbing code, the energy conservation code, the residential code, the fire code, the fuel/gas code, and penalties for violations of the same. Is the motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Council Bill Number 04-2010, an ordinance repealing and reenacting certain sections of Chapter 5 of the Code of Laws and adopting the 2006 International Code on First Reading Order it Published and Set the Public Hearing for May 10, 2010 at 7:00 p.m. in City Council Chambers. I further move to direct staff to make unnecessary amendments to the ordinance to remove all references to the planning permits and revert to the standard exemptions from building permits. And I further move to direct staff to make necessary amendments to the ordinance to provide an exemption for all residential exterior cladding repair and replacement that does not include the relocation of electrical or gas utilities.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval with two amendments.
Is it three minutes?
Two? Please poll the council on the main motion.
I move to split the question.
Oh, you can just call for it. So, we have a, so, we're going to vote on the First Amendment, which is to delete the planning permits. We'll vote on that amendment first. No, it's already there. So, we've split the motion. Councilmember Reinhardt has asked to split the motion. So, the First Amendment was the planning permits, so we can vote on the planning permits first. It was already moved and seconded. So, we can move on the planning permit. Discussion on the planning permits? Councilmember Jay?
I am not in support of removing the planning permits because I feel as though this is put there as a safety guard, both for the city as well as for the person applying for, you know, replacing a building permit. But all of these items are close to $1,000 that are in there, just an estimate on what I've seen. And the trouble that could be caused if something goes awry, I feel that that's a risk that we're putting on that citizen or whomever is applying, and I don't feel comfortable with it. I think the $35 is a very fair amount to ask them to pay and that we have an opportunity to look over their plans and see if they are going to go within our codes and levels of safety.
Any other comments on the amendment to remove the requirement for planning permits? Please poll the council on the amendment to remove.
Motion ties 4 to 4 with Councilmembers Berry, Adams, Langworthy, and Jay voting no. Councilmembers Stites, Reinhardt, Demott, and Sang voting yes.
I'll be voting yes for the amendment to remove the planning permits. Okay, we're voting on the next amendment, was the optional motion fully exempting residential exterior cladding repair and replacement. Discussion on that motion? Of that amendment? That motion was to remove all permits for cladding and repair and replacement except for around relocation of electrical or gas utilities. Discussion on that amendment? Please poll the council on the amendment?
Motion carries 7 to 1 with Councilmember Reinhardt voting no.
Okay, we have the main motion with two amendments. One amendment is to remove the planning permits, and the second motion was to exempt residential exterior cladding repair and replacement. Please poll the council on the main motion as amendment.
Motion carries 7 to 1 with Councilmember Reinhardt voting no.
Go ahead and clear and re-vote, please. Okay, we're voting on the main motion again as amended.
Motion carries 7 to 1 with Councilmember Jay voting no.
Thank you. Item 3 is Council Bill 05-2010, Councilmember Reinhardt.
The proposed ordinance amends the existing contractor license classes and clarifies the definition of a contractor. The scope of the Class 4 license is broadened to include all contractors, not specifically included classes 1 through 3 and 5 through 15. The Class 5 homeowner building contractor license is altered to remove the currently prescribed fees and licensing requirement. It instead has established a simplification registration process similar to the Class 10 Electrical Contractors License. The Class 10 Electrical Contractors License is updated-- Other amendments are intended to clarify-- the verification of license qualifications.
This is Council Bill 05-2010, an ordinance amending certain sections of Chapter 5 and 21 of the Code of Laws to the city of Wheat Ridge concerning licensing--
Of contractors.
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Council Bill Number 5-2010, an ordinance amending certain sections of Chapters 5 and 21 of the Code of Laws concerning licensing of contractors on first reading and set for public hearing on May 10, 2010, 7:00 p.m. in the City Council Chambers.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval, seconded by Councilmember Sang. Please poll the council on first reading.
Motion carries 8 to 0.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is decisions, resolutions, and motions. Resolution 18-2010, Councilmember Reinhardt?
Resolution 18-2010, approving purchase of two replacement police sedans with all required equipment markings, amending the 2010 Public Works operation budget. And in connection therewith, approving a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $73,861.
The issue is that-- The two police vehicles were damaged in the course of their duties, and we need the supplemental funds to replace the vehicles that were damaged. Is the motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Resolution 18-2010, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2010 Public Works operations budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation for $73,861 to replace the two police patrol sedans.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval, seconded by Councilmember Langworthy. Discussion on the main motion? Please poll the council.
Motion carries 8 to 0.
Thank you. I believe that concludes our agenda for tonight. We'll move on to city managers' matters.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of quick things. First, I want to add my congratulations to our public health champions, Ken Johnstone and Sally Payne. Thank them for all their hard work on our comprehensive plan. The second is to notify our citizens. We will be testing our early warning system again on Wednesday, the 14th. That's this Wednesday, April the 14th at 10:00 a.m. The early warning system is located primarily along Alina Gulch and Clear Creek Flood Plains. Again, if you have any questions or other, need any subsequent information regards to that, you can get that on our website or by contacting the city. But again, that's this Wednesday, April 14th at 10:00 a.m. We'll be testing our emergency system again. Thank you.
Thank you. City attorneys' matters?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
City clerks' matters?
Just one really quick thing. I guess I just wanted to acknowledge the unfortunate passing of past mayor of Wheat Ridge, Ray Winger. He was a good mayor and a very devoted and longtime resident of the city of Wheat Ridge. And, you know, his passing is very unfortunate this time and a surprise. So, I just wanted to say that and wish the best to his family and any of his family that are here. And our condolences go out to you.
Thank you. Councilmember Reinhardt?
Nothing tonight.
Councilmember Jay?
Nothing tonight.
Councilmember Demott?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Councilmember Sang?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Stites?
Oh, yeah. One, this is an excellent time to relocate to Wheat Ridge, whether it be your business or your family. There's a lot of good deals out there to be had, and if you need help, please contact staff. They'll do that for you. Secondly, as always, please try to do a positive thing for your family, number one, your community, your neighborhood. It's getting to be weed time again, so we've got to start watching that. And we're going to hammer you because we've got to keep Wheat Ridge looking good. So, please watch your weeds that are coming up. And as always, please try to find it and buy it in Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Councilmember Langworthy?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to just give a quick thank you to the students who participated in the essay contest. They're our future leaders. They are where our country's going to go. And it's good to see that sixth graders and eighth graders are interested enough to enter an essay contest with all the homework and all the obligations that they have. So, I do want to thank them. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams?
Nothing. Thank you, Jerry.
Councilmember Berry?
Thank you. Not only is the planning department getting award from Jefferson County Health for the comprehensive plan, they will be getting award later this month from the Denver Regional Council of Governments in the planning with vision category. So, I want to congratulate staff on all their hard and wonderful work on the comprehensive plan. To add on to some of the LiveWell projects, the Jefferson Conservation District and LiveWell will be doing several things in the city this summer. They're going to be having an electronics benefits transfer machine at the farmer's market. So, anyone who gets government benefits can use that to purchase fresh produce from the farmer's market. We will be doing a community needs assessment for community gardens through Wheat Ridge. We're going to also be doing a community needs assessment for local foods, and are going to establish a local foods task force. And there should be some notices going out about that soon, and I hope everyone can participate. We hope to have access to healthy local foods for everyone in the community. And so, those are some things that will be happening this summer that really are implementation of some of the policies within the comprehensive plan and a strong partnership with Jefferson County Health, Community Development, LiveWell, Wheat Ridge, and the Conservation District. Thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to remind everyone that tomorrow night, April 13th, we're having a town meeting at the rec center at 7:00 p.m. with the mayor's hosting a town meeting for the fire chief and the fire department to discuss their mill levy at the town meeting. If you live south of Clear Creek, that's definitely your Wheat Ridge Fire District, so please plan on attending at the rec center at 7:00 p.m. And also, I wanted to send my condolences to the family of former mayor Ray Winger and also congratulate the essay contest winners from our local schools. Thank you for participating, and congratulations. So, with that, I believe we're adjourned.